I'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting of Monday, March 19th to order. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Chantis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that Agenda Item Number...
Fourteen.
Fourteen be moved into the Public Hearing Section and put in front of Agenda Item Number Eleven, and that after you receive the presentation from Chief felt that you invite anyone in the public who wishes to address the council to do so.
Okay. I would also like to add a questions from the Stingray group, and we'll do that right before the open forum. That was an email that we all received this afternoon. Anything else for the council to consider under additions or deletions to the agenda? Sheen in hearing, none. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Some.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next are consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On the consent item agenda this evening for council's approval is the Caris Health Rice Memorial Hospital Board Minutes of March 7th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board Minutes of March 12th, Planning Commission Minutes of March 7th, Liquor License Renewals Certification of Tax-Farfighted Property, a resolution to approve livestream equipment, and for council's approval, the Human Rights Commission Minutes of January 23rd, Wilmer Community Center Board Minutes of February 14th, Police and Fire Department Statistics for February 2018, and the accounts payable through March 14, 2018. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the items under consent. You'll notice that there are no city council minutes because staff was out, so they haven't been prepared and reviewed, and so that's why they're not in this agenda. Additional discussion? All those in favor of the motion, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Hi.
Chantis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.[11] [S02] 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 Plowman.[11] [S02] 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 Fagerly.[11] [S02] [S02] Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion passes as well. Next, we'll hear from the Stingrays, Ms. Lindquist.
Hello. I'll just read my speech, and then if you have any questions, we can go from there. Hello, my name is Jennifer Lindquist. I live in the Wilmer School District and outside the city limits. I am a board member and a parent of two swimmers of the Stingray Swim Club. I am coming to you tonight because lack of communication between our school district and the community ed and rec abruptly left our swim club without a pool before our season is over. The swim club board received notice on Wednesday, March 14th, that the high school pool be closing starting today, Monday, March 19th. We immediately scheduled the meeting with community ed and rec for the following day. They informed us that they had only been told on Tuesday, the 13th, that the pool would be closed. This short notice leaves us no time to adjust. The swim club had been previously told in January by community ed and rec that the HVAC system was going to be upgraded starting at the end of May into July, so we had already made plans to move to the middle school pool for our summer session. The Stingray Swim Club has a contract to use the pool for the 2017-2018 school year. We have since learned that the school board knew this closure would occur as early as November of 2017, and yet, community ed presented our club with a contract for the entire season. We have over 35 families this season that are affected. As you may have heard, a new record for our Wilmer school was recently set for the 400 freestyle by Mateo Marin Mara, Jacob Meyer, Aiden Schuler, and Garrett Sholdies. We are proud to have had a hand in training these young men within our Stingray Swim Club before they joined the Wilmer Boys Swim Team. Now, our families have no training to prepare them for meets that are occurring this spring. We have also paid up, we also have a paid coaching staff that we have to consider. At this point, the cost of closure is unknown to our swim club. We know that the possibility of refunds to families or compensation to our coaches may be in our future. We have asked about using the middle school pool, but we were told by community ed and rec that school activities and swimming lessons would take precedence over our Stingray Swim Club. We are extremely disappointed, frustrated, and disheartened that we have been overlooked and left without options. The lack of communication between these entities needs to be addressed immediately. Why should the kids who have been training and working hard pay the price for poor communication? We have a contract. This is not an emergency repair. We ask that the city council and school boards find a way to make this right. Contracts with the city should mean something. These kids should see that their city and school district will do everything they can to keep their word. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holland, I forwarded this to you, this email to you after I had received it this morning, actually, I received it at noon, and have you had a chance to look into this at all?
No, I have not. I didn't receive it until late this afternoon, and I did have a meeting briefly with Dr. Holm, and he was aware of this issue, and I also talked with Steve Brizendine, and he was aware of this issue as well. Steve may have a comment, but I do not know all the details of this.
Okay. So, as far as you know, there's not a whole lot we can do about it, is that what you're saying?
My understanding from Dr. Holm is you're correct.
Mr. Brizendine, is there anything else that we can do about this? Okay. You know, it's frustrating on behalf of the council, you know, when I received your email today, I responded back to you rather quickly, I believe, and, you know, our staff was all in meetings this afternoon and stuff like that, and that doesn't give you the answer, but I certainly hope that we can try to find something. So, is anybody from the council that has any comments? Councilmember Nelson?
I think Mr. Councilmember Mesky's trying to...
Councilmember Mesky.
I didn't, this is the first I've heard about it. We did not receive an email. So, right now, I'm completely in the dark, so I don't know if it would be appropriate to hear details about why this happened, so it doesn't happen again, because this is the first I've heard of it. I did not receive an email this afternoon.
Okay, I apologize. It was sent to Councilmember Nelson, Alvarado, and Osmus, and myself. I thought the entire council had it, so I should have forwarded it to the rest of you. Councilmember, uh...
May I?
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I'm just curious if there's a contract, how we can not take some steps to honor that contract. I mean, is the school aware of this, and, you know, is there a delay that they can do to start or to honor the contract? Is there some other area they can go, other pool? It feels like a sense of urgency from the standpoint on their part. What steps can we get them some answers as quickly as possible?
Councilmember Chantis, followed by Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I understand when it's an open forum, we don't usually engage, but since it's added to the agenda, I appreciate it. Could we get some background on what the work is that's being done at the pool, so we at least have an understanding, and, you know, if, I'm assuming that means that it's, can't be canceled if that's the situation? I don't know, but it'd be good for us to have more.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, the school district entered in an agreement with Chapel Central to replace the HVAC system in the pool area. That work started today. They looked last week to see if they could change the schedule of that work, and it did not happen, so the pool area is no longer usable at this time. We have worked with the Stingrays to give them as many options as available to them around the use of the middle school pool, because that's the only other facility we've got access to at this point, and those are issues that are still being worked through, obviously. They've got a schedule that they've had, and we've got schedules that we've got in place where we're trying to work out the best fix to the problem that we can.
Just wait. Councilmember Plowman, followed by Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious how on earth this could happen, if it's at all related to anything that we did regarding the CER, School District Contract, and also, if there was a contract in place regarding this, what was the plan, was this the plan all along as far as the school goes? And, I mean, was there legal teeth in that contract, and does that, can that negatively affect the city? Because it seems like if this was work that was being planned, it would have been put out there, and there wouldn't be a shock and awe of, like, how did this come up all of a sudden? I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, but I did, this is right, yeah, first time I hear about it, and I'm a little bit, sounds like I'm a little bit disappointed in the school, because this is out of left field.
Yeah, right. Mr. Holland, you're not prepared to make a comment about that?
No, we did not have a detailed discussion. No, I don't know the details of it at all. Maybe Mr. Brizendine does.
Councilmember Osmus.
Along with that, I guess I would be curious if, who made the arrangements with Chapel for when they were going to start on this? In my understanding was, there was discussion that it would happen after the senior high school swimming was done. We didn't take into account anything with the contract with the Stingrays. So, who did the contract? Where's the miscommunication with the, with the work being done by Chapel?
I'm not at liberty to speak to what the details of that are, because I'm not sure that I'm 100% sure who was the stakeholder of that. I mean, it's a decision that the district had made. Obviously, there's, there's, you know, a big miscommunication regarding this issue, but that doesn't get to where we're at today, to be honest.
Okay, so we're past, obviously, if they started this morning, we're past being able to see if Chapel can start, do the work in a couple of months.
That is my understanding.
To honor the contract. Okay?
Councilmember Nelson.
So, just clarification, who signed the contract? Did community ed and rec sign the contract?
What contract?
Well, they're indicating they have a contract.
It's an agreement to use the facility. Yes.
And community ed and rec signed it?
That is correct.
So, it's safe to say the school wasn't aware of that agreement?
I wouldn't state that at all, no.
Okay, so basically, we have an agreement, we have a misunderstanding as to start date on the project, is basically what I'm gathering out of this, and so, Ms. Lindquist, I would encourage you to continue working with Mr. Brizendine and try to find a successful solution to this. If we started the work at the, at the high school, I mean, we can't stop the work, and we're probably to the point where things have been taken apart to where it would be unsafe, and of course, you don't want your, your people to be unsafe, so it appears to me that we have a miscommunication here. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, and Mr. Holland will work on this this week, and we'll try to, if we can, if we can help any way we can, we will, but understand that the city pool is basically frozen, I believe, so we can't get you in there, so we apologize for that. Have you tried, like, with the YMCA or anybody like that, and seen if they've got any space? Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Plowman?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think it's got to be really, really clear that we delineate, I don't think "we" did anything. I, did, did the city of Wilmer do anything?
No, I don't believe we did.
We did through community ed and rec.
All right, so if you're, if you're saying I'm assuming liability, I'm not. I'm saying that we heard their concern, and at this point, we will try to resolve it if we can. Councilmember Mesky.
Well, I'll just reiterate, the city council is not the creator of this issue.
Correct.
However, the city council will do all it can to help resolve the issue.
Correct.
We're not happy about it.
All right. Councilmember Nelson.
I think we have a responsibility as being part of community ed and rec to resolve this. So, whether, we didn't do this, but it's happened, and so I think we need to work with the school to resolve this. I, you know, I, it's unfortunate, but I think if there is an agreement that's signed, that means that someone on the city and the school's behalf signed it. So, we are responsible, you know, I'm not assuming liability, but I think we should step up and try to figure out the best way to resolve this.
And, and I think the best way to resolve it is to leave it in the hands of staff, and, and so, at this point, certainly connect with Ike Holland, our city administrator, and he'll help you through any processes that we can, so, again, unfortunate event that happened, and thanks for bringing it to our attention. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the open forum, so I have a number of people here who asked to speak, Ms. Lindquist, okay, Mr. Anthony Dockin. State your name, and if you reside within the city of Wilmer or outside of the city.
My, my name is Anthony Dockin, and I have resided in the city of Wilmer for 68 years.
Thank you.
I presently live in the same house I was born in, which is over on the east side, where you guys are planning to do road construction. The major problem that's over there is that the corner of 15th and Trot floods about four times a year, and it gets up to three of the houses that are over there, and it's about four feet deep in the center of the road. Now, they're going to redo the roads over there, but they're not going to do anything with the water. The thing that I was told by the city engineer is they would have to go all the way up by Highway 12 to connect into a pipe over there. Now, if you guys remember, right over on West 11th Street, a few years ago, you guys had a problem where the city water on the street flooded a house over there and broke the basement, and the city wound up buying the property and creating a pond over there out of it. Now, my suggestion is that the city look into the northeast corner of Gaseous Field, which is where the water originally ran to in 1963, when the road was built. On the block that I live on, in 1963, there was two houses, one where I live, and one in the opposite corner of the block. And all of the water from the street that ran over the curb, ran across kitty corner, across the lot, and back out to Gaseous Field. Since then, there, on my street, there has been four new houses built, and on Trot, there has been two new houses built, three new houses built, and on 16th Street, there is two houses built. Now, all that water from all the way up to the top of the hill by Lincoln School comes down there, everything from Becker Avenue, 13th Street, 14th Street, 15th Street, and 16th Street comes to that corner. And the city engineer said there's nothing they can do about it. Well, if they're not going to do anything about the water, why are they replacing the street? Because it's water damaged. Now, to me, if the city purchased a couple lots over off of Gaseous Field from him and run a pipe over there, and it would get rid of the water, and it's going to be a lot less costly than it is for us that live over there.
Thank you for your comments. There's a three-minute limit on public comments, so thank you for your comments. Next, Mr. Michelle, I'm going to kill your last name, so I'm not even going to try, and just tell us if you reside within the city or not.
Yes, Michelle Maratski, and I am a resident of the city of Wilmer. And I actually live just a couple of blocks from Mr. Dockin to the west, so I know exactly what he's speaking of. I've been detoured around that more than once, but I actually wanted to come in favor of the project. I have had the property just coming up on three years now, and when I saw the letter they sent us, I mean, this is, this is stuff that was done in 1958 and 1963, I believe, are the dates. That's almost the same age as my parents. So, you know, I really see a need, when I turn down my street and I, my car jumps down and I go in, I really appreciate that the city has taken a look at this area and hope that the project does go through, and we can have some improved streets and help with property values, things like that.
Thank you. Again, if there's a comment for the public hearing on the street projects, let's keep those to the public hearing, because then you're not limited on your time. During the open forum, you're limited on your time, so, Mr. Dockin, if you choose to continue your presentation, you can do that, if you want to speak about the street project. I didn't realize that that's what you were going to talk about, so that would be appropriate for the public hearing process. So, Mr. Cath, are you wanting to speak about the street projects, or are you wanting to speak on something else?
About the street projects.
Okay, if that's all right with you, if you don't want to speak to that, we can wait until that piece, so.
Good.
Okay, we have nothing else coming before us under the open forum. Next, we have a recognition retirement for Mr. Randy Cardell, our building official, Mr. Peterson.
I'll be very brief. I know city administrator Holland wishes to speak as well. I'd like to ask Randy to come up, so we can recognize him. Randy is completing his 25 and a half years with the city of Wilmer as of this Thursday. Randy's been a very dedicated employee. When I come to work, he's always at his desk. If I come to work at 7:15, he's at his desk. It's just been consistent since day one. Randy's respected by his coworkers, his contractors and colleagues for his knowledge. There's no one that knows codes like Randy, and he's not a by-the-book kind of person. He can look at something and say, okay, there's five different ways we can solve this. It doesn't have to look like it is in the book. There's other ways to meet the intent of the code. Let's figure out a solution. Let's not just tell you you have a problem, and that's something I've always really respected in Randy. We're going to have him around a little bit part-time before he leaves under the para program, I believe. We will no longer have access to his news reports and anecdotes to lighten our days. If anybody out there is looking to replace Randy as the in-house city hall philosopher, we're taking applications. But Randy, it's been a real pleasure to work with you, and thank you, and congratulations. And on behalf of the city, have a certificate of appreciation recognizing your 25 years with the city.
Cool.
Thank you.
I also just want to express my appreciation. I know we've only known each other a few months, but, you know, I have noticed one thing, not only does he do his job very well, but he's very engaging with the staff and with the public, and lightens the load around the city hall, and helps morale in a lot of ways, and we're going to miss him for that, certainly, and also, I do understand what it means to spend 20-plus years in one place, and the dedication that it takes, and what I've said in this card, and there is money in here, so you'll like that, and that's just a note from me, but, you know, not only did you help this organization, but you should be proud that you helped this community be a better place, and so, we thank you for that.
Thank you. Randy, I'm sure, knowing you as long as I have, that you've got a few words to say, but on behalf of the mayor's office, I'd also congratulate you on 25-plus good years with the city. I had the privilege of working beside you as fire marshal for a number of years, almost 13, and I always appreciated your wisdom, your wit, and your ability to get things done, so thank you for that. Is there anybody else in the council that wishes to make some comments before we hear from Mr. Cardell? Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Randy has been the most accommodating building inspector that we've come across, and we've dealt with maybe 12 to 15 different building inspectors, and that, whenever there's a question, and I'm sure we're not the only ones that have called you, but his knowledge of the building code is just, it's, it's unbelievable. I mean, he doesn't even have to open the book many times, and he's helped us out. If we have a problem somewhere, he's usually right there to suggest some way to fix whatever the problem is, and I just want to thank you personally, and all the guys from our crew, just, they asked if they could come to your party, and I said, yes, you could, but congratulations, and enjoy life after work.
Thank you. Well, there were two versions of this. There was this one, that starts out in a little town in Indiana a long time ago, and there's a short and sweet version, which probably is appropriate for here. Greetings, Mayor Calvin, city council, and residents of the city. My name is Randy Cardell, building official. It has been 9,317 days since I started working for the city of Wilmer, and I counted every one of them. When I first started, it was a black and white change, and we had a lot of controversy between contractors and how this was going to go, and we had to make things work, so we kind of took black and white, and we made it gray for a while, so we could get the message across, you know, building codes. I look at the building code as not a Bible, but as a guideline to accomplish a specific I have some real interesting numbers here. Since 1992 to 2017, so that includes no valuations of 18 so far, the city of Wilmer did 923,165,000 dollars in building valuation, almost a million dollars. It would have been nice to break that million-dollar mark. Permit revenues that we generated within that period, a little over $8 million. Zoning inspections. Zoning inspections by our department are done by four individuals within our department, two city planners, a clerk, permit technician, and two officials. Within the last 10 years, we have done 5,000 zoning inspections in the city of Wilmer, and you should notice the difference. It rains mattresses in Wilmer. Some of the projects that we got to oversee, you're sitting in one of them right here. Look out the window, the law enforcement center. My very first major plan review was the new senior high school. I did the plan review and did all the inspections on that project. The waste treatment plant. I was fortunate to do two schools, which is major, major amount of work. I really had a good time doing that, and training staff on how to pick up and take care of them. Rice Hospital, the Bethesda Projects, it's endless. And I don't want to say aye, 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 because there is no aye in team. We have a team in planning and development of five dedicated professional people that take care of the entire permit inspection and zoning compliance process. During my time, I had a chance to have and train six interns, who have now all moved on and run major municipalities of their own. One of them has become a national educator of codes. That's quite a project. It was, it was a good time. We've had some highs and lows. Let me get the... The codes, the codes are constantly changing. They require education continually to keep up on what's going on in here. In 2020, the city will be adopting the 2018 international series of codes again. They have added 100 pages to how to build a house since what we're enforcing right now. It will take education. Codes are about life safety, to be in a safe building, protect lives, protect property. From the day I started, and you can walk into my cubicle today, there is a floor plan of the Coconut Grove nightclub. It was a tragic fire that happened in 1942, and 490 people perished in a fire inside this nightclub. That drives codes, loss of life, loss of property. I use that every day when I look at that, to remember exiting. I want people to get into my building, to get out of my building, and get out safely and in a timely manner. You can't give up life safety. There's, I can accept different methods and materials, the building a... The building a code allows me to do that, and I can research this to determine, is this a comparable? Is this safe? Is this product safe? With the new market and technologies coming out, it's constant research to keep up with the products that are coming out. Life safety decisions. I hope I have made no life safety decisions. I wish to leave no ghosts for my replacement, Tom. Tom Rosemeyer's going to do a great job. I really appreciate having the chance to work for the City of Wilmer. It's been a good time. I will continue to do work. The city currently is looking at 16 state contracts right now with an additional six contracts coming for public buildings. Should we decide to build a new city hall, that will be a public building under a state contract. So, we're going to continue working for the city part-time and get Tom up to speed and get staff up to speed, get our new replacement for Tom going, and then eventually I'm going to ride off into the sunset. Bought a new motorcycle, I'm looking forward to use it. Thank you very much for putting up with me for 25 years and seven months. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Thanks for your service.
I just want to make the announcement that on Friday from 2:00 a.m., or 2:00 p.m. 2:00 a.m., wow. 2:00 to 4:00 at the fire department room, conference room, we will have a retirement party for Randy. So, we'd appreciate if you want to drop by and congratulate him. I'm sure he would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire station. From 2:00 to 4:00 on Friday at the fire station. Okay, the next is the public hearing on the 2018 improvement. Mr. Christensen.
Yeah. Mayor members of the council, is it all right if I leave the screen like that so that I get my notes on some of these, some of these pages?
Certainly.
Okay.
But this is also what the public sees, so.
I understand. They'll have to read fast. Hopefully, I can remember. Tonight is the time and place for the public hearing is rescheduled, actually, from two weeks ago when we had some, a little bit of snow to deal with instead of having a council meeting. It's positioned the City of Wilmer, as this slide says, to seek input of all interested citizens and our affected members of the public in the city's decision-making process for these street projects. Purpose of the hearing is to review and explain the proposed improvements and estimated costs and obtain input from interested parties, and I will try to do that tonight. Just the members of the, so Mayor Calvin has opened the hearing, and I will present these findings and the proposed costs, estimated costs, and then we'll get some public comments, and the mayor will close the hearing. Improvement report includes three different, three different sections, a reconstruction section, an overlay, and then some miscellaneous projects. I may not get into all the miscellaneous projects tonight as the intent of the improvement hearing is for the assessed properties to be able to give input. And so, some of these, some of the projects you'll see this summer were not assessed, and so they may not appear on this list. It's a small list of, or a map of, rather, of what, of the areas of town that we're dealing with, and then short list of reconstructed projects. Of course, we're reconstructing 9th Street and Park Avenue Northwest. This is a project that's been on the books for probably three years now, and we've pushed it back a number of years for a couple of different reasons, financially as well as lift stations, fairgrounds that we want to get into ground before we do the street construction project. We've also got, as mentioned earlier tonight, the, what affectionately call the stub streets, 13th, 14th, 15th and 16th Southeast to go from Trot Avenue South to where Jerry Geish is still farming. And then we're doing Sunrise Park Ball Field parking lot. We're going to expand that and overlay that, overlay that park on the south end of 23rd Street Southeast. We're doing 30th Street Southwest. I'm sorry, that's Western Interceptor. We won't have storm, we won't have assessments on that one. My apologies. We're going to reconstruct 19th Street Northwest, which runs from the highway in front of West Central Steel, and that one, if you'll recall, was on the list last year as well. We pulled that one so that West Central Steel could do their new building construction before we put the street in. We've got a number of overlays, 17th Street Northwest and Ella Avenue Northwest. This goes from 7th Street, the crossing we talked about earlier tonight at the work session, will run west and then south to Gorton Avenue. And then we've got a North 71 path overlay, which, again, this will not be assessed, but it's in this, it's in this report. It runs from Robbins Island to Candy Ohio Power Co-op Building. During the reconstruct, we'll remove the batuminous paving, remove and replace curb and gutter, utilities as needed, and storm sewer improvements. We'll also grade, add gravel base as needed, and then add the paving and turf reestablishment after the, after the project has, has been completed. Typical section of street is 10 inches of gravel, 4 inches of batuminous base, blacktop, geotextile as needed, and then, well, of course, we'll remove and replace some curb and gutter. In 2018, we're proposing almost a mile of reconstruct. Bullamink has been contracted to do 9th and Park. Again, they were contracted a number of years ago, and we've had to remove this, these two streets or this one project from, from, from the list for a number of different reasons. 9th Street includes 1,200 feet, about almost a quarter mile. It's currently got 6 and 1/2 inches of aggregate and 1 and 1/2 inches of batuminous paving. It's currently on a rating of 20, which, if you'll recall, my rating scale of 1 to 100, 20 is getting pretty low. And then I won't go into all the details, but I've got a number of different reviews and reevaluations of this street section and the years that they're put in, and this is all in the database at City Hall, and I'd be happy to share with anyone if they would like to see that. Park Street, or Park Avenue, rather, is much the same. It's almost a quarter mile, it's 1,100 lineal feet, originally reconstructed, originally constructed in 1963, was overlaid in 1979. It also has a 6 inch, 6 and 1/2 inches of aggregate base and inch and a half of batuminous. And its rating is 40. The stub streets, as I mentioned, are all very short sections of street, 13th, 14th, 15th and 16th, all obviously the same length, all about 340 feet, all constructed, I'm sorry, I don't know if they were all constructed in 63. I believe they were all constructed in 1963, all have 6 and 1/2 inches of aggregate base and an inch and a half of batuminous. And this slide is saying that 13th Street is currently rated at a 10. 14th Street, much the same information, rated at 15. 15th Street is rated at a 20, and 16th is rated at a 15. So, you can see that they're all well in need, and we'll be doing the necessary repairs and reconstruct of those streets. It's a picture of Sunrise Park Ball Field Parking Lot. As I've mentioned before, we're going to expand that parking lot. The trail comes in from the east to this parking lot, to the, to the north end of this parking lot by the ball fields, and it's heavily used, in fact, overflow of this parking lot on, on game days. 19th Street Southwest is, and actually, I think that should be northwest, is from, is from Highway 12 to Gorton Avenue. It's in front of West Central Steel. And this one here, we are now proposing, because of the amount of truck traffic going in there, a concrete section. And so, we're proposing this being a concrete street. It's currently about 800 lineal feet, originally constructed in 1967, overlaid in 1996. Currently has 10, 10 inches of aggregate base and 5 and 1/2 inches of batuminous. Oops, went back too far. As far as overlays, we'll mill off an inch and a half up against the curb, and then we'll feather that out towards the center line, one pass, so that we still keep, keep and maintain the crown on the street, but the pavement will match the, the lip of the curb or the front of the face of the curb. So, we'll correct the damaged areas by cutting that out. We'll pave that back in and then overlay the whole thing, so it'll be a new, new surface when we are done. Current overlay projects are 17th Street Northwest and Ella Avenue Northwest, as I mentioned, and these are the streets that Ella makes the corner to 17th or 17th makes the corner to Ella, depending on which direction you're driving. They were originally constructed in 1969, reconstructed in 1989. The base is 12 inches and currently 6 inches of batuminous, and a rating is 75. And so, if you'll recall, the, the aggregate base is good and the batuminous is thick enough currently, and with a rating of 75, it's a candidate for an overlay rather than reconstruct, and we can save considerable money on that and maintain the surface. And I just fibbed to you a little bit, Ella Avenue was actually reconstructed, or constructed in 1949 and reconstructed in 89, and so it's quite a bit older than 17th Street. Path overlay, as I mentioned, will run from Robbins Island north to Candy, Candy Ohio Power Co-op Building, and that lot, if you've been on that path, it's, it's been underwater a number of times with the, with the lake and needs, is in, is in, is in need of an overlay. It's 4,400 lineal feet, so 8/10 of a mile, and the estimated cost on that one is almost $90,000. Project schedule, as you, as you know, is tonight's improvement hearing. We're going to try to let bids on April 24th. The plans are being prepared as we speak. Assessment hearing will be mid-June after we receive those bids and award those bids. After that assessment hearing will be, the plan is to begin construction in July and end the construction in the cases where substantial completion at least by, in, in October. Now, for the costs, reconstruction costs, just over 1.4 million. Overlay costs, just shy of 500,000. And then our miscellaneous projects on this particular list was not quite $100,000 for an estimated total cost per this report of just over $2 million. As far as the assessment schedule goes, and I'll be, remind everybody this when we have our assessment hearing, the reminder notices will go out in September, full payment without interest by October 31st. Partial payments, partial prepayments allowed before that time. First payment due May 15th, if you have that assessed, and prepayments are allowed of $1,500 or more before November 15th. I can go through these commonly asked questions now, and it might preempt or prompt you for some other questions if you, if you have them. Will this, will, when will the work start and when is the completion date? I just went over that. We're going to try to bid them out in April, start them as early as June or July, and finish by October. How the owners be notified, as many of them have been notified already of this, of this hearing, we're going to hand-deliver or mail notices, and we will try to keep everybody up to date on milestones within the project. Assessment pay schedule and procedures. Can allow the city to submit the assessment total to the county for collection over 10 years. You can prepay the full amount to the City of Wilmer without interest by October 31st. You can make partial prepayments or partial payments of the City of Wilmer and then allow the city to submit the remainder to the county on the tax rolls. Can I get to my residents during construction? The contractors typically work well with the, with the residents, try to get them in and out as needed, and the street is open to local traffic at night in most cases. Will the street be paved this year? Yes, it will. However, if it's a full reconstruct and utilities are involved, we'll probably put what they call a base course on this year, so we'll put half the pavement down this year, and we'll put the other half on in the spring of '19. Will there be dust during construction? Probably, but we do what we can, and we try to get the contractors to do what they can to minimize the dust during the, during the construction. Will the street or driveway be closed during the project? What they typically do is close what they need to while they're working, but again, allow the local traffic. If they, if you need to get to your house, they work with you on that. Can I relocate or widen the driveway during construction? Yes, you can. That is the time to do it, up to the width of the current code that is allowed per the building codes. If we have damage to the sprinkler system, how does that, how is that handled? The city assumes no responsibility or liability for those sprinkler heads, although I know the contractors work with the residences and residents and try to get, get those sprinkler heads at least taken out of, out of the way before they, they get damaged. Warranties in this case are a year on the streets, three years on the utilities, and I already went over the schedule, and I think that's all I have. If you've got questions during the construction, please call City Hall Engineering Department, and we can take care of questions you may have or get you in contact with the person that can. That's all I have for you, Mayor.
Okay, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open, and I will go through them project by project. And if you have, if you want to make a comment in regards to it, just raise your hand and come to the mic. Otherwise, I will move through the projects rather quickly. The first project is 9th Street Northwest from Ella Avenue to Park Avenue. Next is Park Avenue Northwest, 10th Street to 7th Street. Next item is 13th Street Southeast, Trot Avenue to the south end.
I'll just reiterate my support for the project.
Your name and?
I'm sorry, Michelle Muratsky.
Thank you.
As a resident in town, and I will just reiterate my support for the project that, as you can see, 13th Street was rated at a 10. So, I think that, as you said, those stub streets are sorely in need of replacing and, I mean, the full dig out and everything.
Great, thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak on 13th Street from Trot Avenue to the end? Next, 14th Street, Trot Avenue to the end? Next, 15th Street. Mr. Doc.
As I said before, there is a major problem with the water there on the corner of Trot and 15th. Now, from what I understand, the city is also planning on lowering the street. Now, they have had surveyors out there the last week, and they are going to lower the street. Well, my idea is that if they lower the street, they're sending the water to more houses that is on the corner. Now, when I talked to the engineer, he said that the reason for lowering the street was to get the water off the yards. Okay? If anybody's familiar with that area, it's a side of a hill. And either, it's either going to run off your yard or it's going to run to your backyard and across to neighbors and out the other side on the other side of the street. So, lowering the street, to me, doesn't do anything but cause trouble because instead of affecting three houses, you're now going to affect probably six or seven more. And if they're not going to take care of the water problem, that street is just going to break up in a matter of a couple of years anyhow because it floods on an average of four times a year. And we have three houses, one of them that is a rental property that is owned by one of the ex-employees of the city, and his house is the one, one of the ones that are majorly affected. Yeah, there's three of them right now that I know have water in their basements every time it rains that way. And we have sinkholes that are starting on that corner. So we have to do something about the water. So I hope that you guys figure out something to do with it, instead of, let's fix the street and then we'll refix it again in a few years and cost the guys $10,000 each that have to do it.
Mr. Christensen, can you address the issue of lowering the street?
Mayor, members of the council. The... One good example or one good reason to lower the street is to do exactly what was mentioned, and that is to collect the water in the street rather than in the yards. We've got that in a lot of intersections in town now, where the intersection itself will flood, but based on the elevation lines or the elevation of the water line for the flood, it does not go much into the front yards of the houses that adjacent to that street. So by lowering the street, as long as the storm drain itself has the capacity and has the slope to get the water away under the street, which we are adding catch basins and we are maintaining or modifying, tweaking as we need to that storm drain, by lowering the street, it actually allows us to have more storage in that intersection rather than in the yards of the residents.
Okay, thank you. Next, Sixth Street Southeast from Trot Avenue to the South End. Mr. Dacken, go ahead.
He said that there is no yards that are affected by this?
No, I didn't hear him say that. No, he said that by dropping the height of the street, it'll allow water to pool in the street, and then the goal is to remove it from the yards and to move it to the street to move it to the storm sewer. So it's to attempt to improve the surface.
That water is four feet deep when it comes. And the house that I was talking about earlier, it has water running around both sides of the house and out, and it runs all the way back through the backyards out to Gash's Field at the high point of the water. Now, by lowering the street and trying to keep it into the street, you're not going to get four feet of water in the street without still having it on the yards.
Yeah, the goal is not to take it totally off the yards. The goal is to improve the drainage. And by dropping it down, what their objective is, is to improve the water moving into the storm system.
Would it not be better to put a drain pond over there somewhere like Gash's Field and run a pipe over there and get the water off the street totally?
Mr. Christensen, can you answer that for us?
Mayor, members of the council, all of the water on all four of those streets currently runs to the north, so in order to get it to Gash's Field to a pond, we'd have to pump it. And so we're not planning on any pumps for this type of, for this project. I think the one street, Thirteenth, I think is the only one that has an inlet in the middle where the low point of the street is actually in the middle of that short block. All the others run to the north.
Thank you.
If it runs across the grass to Gash's Field and has since 1963, how can we need a pump to take and run it same way? If you just put a pipe right under the road and dig Gash's Field down a little bit, you've got an excellent pond. Because I would say there is about a six-foot drop between Trot Avenue Corner and Gash's Field.
Thank you. Anybody for Sunrise Park Ball Field Parking Lot? Next, we have Nineteenth Street Northwest from Highway 12 to Gorton Avenue.
My name is Brian Keith, and I live outside the city limits, but I'm here on behalf of West Central Steel, and we're expressing our desire to have concrete be on Nineteenth Street. With our recent expansion, we're anticipating doubling our incoming and outgoing trucks, and we want the road to last as long as possible, so just reiterating that to the council here.
So you're supportive, and you know there may be an upcharge to that?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, and you're...
We're good with that.
You're good with that?
Yep.
And you have communicated with Mr. Christensen?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Next, we have Ella Avenue... I'm sorry. Next, we have Seventeenth Street Northwest from Gorton Avenue to Ella Avenue. Then we have Ella Avenue Northwest from Seventeenth Street to Seventh Street. And then the final project is the reconstruction of the bike path. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to address the council before we close the public hearing and bring it to the council? Seeing in hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to council. Council, what are your wishes? Councilmember Mesky.
I was just going to catch the engineer Christensen where he sits down. Just curious, because you make the assessment of whether there needs to be storm sewer improvements. On those stub streets where we were talking about floodwater, what's your assessment of the current situation of storm sewer runoff? And why are we not looking at any kind of changes? Are we looking at changes there?
Councilmember Mesky, we absolutely are. We've looked at every project we do, every reconstruction project we do, we look at trying to improve the storm drainage we have. The problem we have, as everyone knows in Wilmer, is lack of grade difference and lack of slope that we can get that pipe to lay at to get the water away. And without building the entire town up a number of feet, that would be the best solution to make that happen. So what we're doing in this case is we're, if we're putting in new pipe, the pipe has got better, not to geek out too much on you, but have better coefficients of friction so that the water runs better at lower slopes, less grade. But at the same time, we're going to also put in some additional inlets in order to get the water into the pipe quicker, but we're kind of, well, we're not kind of, we're really limited to the amount of water we can get away from town any faster.
Pipe size, diameters?
We can get pipe size, but it's still, when the water fills up downstream, you could have a pipe the size of, that you could drive a car in, and the water will not go any farther.
Yep, I understand.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Christensen, for presenting this information tonight. Just for clarity's sake, lay of the land and the slope or grade of the storm drain system, they're two separate components to all of these projects, correct?
That's correct, and that's a good point. And even beyond that, the lay of a yard slopes away from a house, and then whichever direction the existing ground or what an overlot grading would have done prior to building the house. The street can slope a completely different direction, and utilities under the street can slope yet another direction if you really wanted to get technical about it. So the streets and the utilities slope to the north in these stub streets.
So it's safe to assume that for all these projects, street improvements, drainage, whatnot, we use engineered best practice, but sometimes that can still conflict with grading around homes, and there's absolutely nothing that we can do with regards to that?
It can, and what we do in this particular case, or in some cases, is we lower a street so they contain as much water as we can to not eliminate but help with the situation. A lot of cases, the situation that was mentioned about the basement and the flooding, we've not eliminated the cause for concern on that intersection either, but the water is contained generally in the intersection, and it's generally gone within 30 minutes to an hour.
Thank you.
Just a question, then. If you have a road that is flooded, and if it is four times a year for up to an hour, what does that do to the life of that street?
A lot of times, Councilmember Mesky, in situations like that, we'll put a fabric or grid underneath that street to help hold the structure underneath the pavement in place so that it doesn't wash out. If water gets underneath the pavement, it absolutely can be detrimental to that pavement and wash some of that base out. So when we reconstruct these streets, a lot of times we'll put a fabric so that the fines can't move up in or out of our base structure, our typical section, and sometimes we'll use different types of fabric or grid structure to hold that stuff in place.
Is that fabric going to be recommended for these stub streets?
It is.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Fagerly.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Just a question for the homeowners with the changes that we're making in the elevation of the street. Are there things that they should consider doing that could help drainage in addition to what we're proposing? I mean, because there seems to be a difference of opinion about which way the water goes. Is there other things that they could do to reroute water?
You know, beyond, Councilmember Nelson, beyond grading around their own house, what I'm proposing or what we're designing for the streets themselves, we will taper that ground back into their existing ground, so it'll slope away from, wherever our cut is, it'll slope into the street more. So if the homeowner wanted to do additional landscaping or additional grading, I think that's, you know, anybody's welcome to do that at any time.
Okay. Just was curious if the changes, you know, would be beneficial for them to do something different?
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the 2018 Street and Trail project, approve the plans and specs.
Motion made and seconded to approve the ordering the 2018 Street and other improvements directing staff to prepare final plans and specs. Additional discussion, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, what does the elevation do at the north end of those streets when it hits Trot Avenue? Does it all go east? Or does it just sit there?
Say that again.
The elevation at the north end of those streets?
Right.
Where the water accumulates, does it go east from there?
Yes.
Downhill?
Yes.
So it also floods at Lakeland and Trot?
It'll get to Lakeland and Trot, but at that point, it's usually in the pipe in the underground itself.
Okay, and so the extra inlets that you're going to have, are they going to make more of an impact too, just because you have more of them? They're going to hold more water, or are they going to take it quicker from a couple spots?
They'll take it quicker, but what happens is you've got to be careful, because if you load the pipe too quickly, then somewhere else floods, and maybe that's where what you're getting at. When the backwater or tailwater effect happens, water's not going to go into the inlets if they're already full. But what the anticipation is, is that some of the early rain or early runoff will get into the pipes quicker.
And then this water also goes to 23A?
Yes, eventually, it ends up there, yes.
And so it can back up from there, actually, also?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with the county completing the Peach Creek project, is that going to help the east side of Wilmer, hopefully?
Councilmember Fagerly, when you look at numbers on paper, the quick answer is no, but I can't help but think that by diverting the water, the amount of water they did from coming into and then back out of the city, that it won't help. So I would think that it will, but numbers on paper show that it will not significantly help.
We'll have to wait and see.
Right.
And then on the Sunrise Parking Lot?
Yep.
Busy time is end of May through early August. They won't start that, will they?
Yeah, we're going to have to discuss the schedule on that one. And I could have mentioned that earlier, too. We've got other projects, the park and Ninth, and then obviously the Fairgrounds Lift Station project. We have summer activities at the county fairgrounds that we have to work scheduling around as well. So contractors will be aware of that, obviously, the location and the use of that facility, the park or parking lot, and bid accordingly, unfortunately, but we'll have to work on that schedule with them.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Alvarado.
With a path that you're doing from Robbins Island, are they going to build that up? Or is that going to still flood in the spring, or what's the plan there? Or are you going to put, do they put down any of that fabric?
You know, I haven't looked at the detailed design for that quite yet. Trying to get the streets done first and this assessment things and all that taken care of first, because we don't assess for the paths. And so my assumption at this point is that it will be built up slightly, but that area, the one area that I can think of, the first section, low section there, is actually designed for a low or an overflow for the lake itself. And so we could build that up, but then you're going to end up ponding somewhere else. And so we'll probably try to make the structure of the base itself hold up to water in and around it, but at this point, I wouldn't anticipate it being built up a number of feet that I can, you know, visualize to block that other area.
Okay, thank you.
So a motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution ordering the 2018 Street and other improvements and directing staff to prepare the final plans and specs. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Chuantas.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, council, if you'd introduce a resolution to approve final plans and specs and authorize publication of the advertisement for bids for the 2018 improvement project.
So move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Chuantas.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we'll have an update from our police chief on our body cam policy. Chief Feld.
Now we'll see how good my computer skills are here getting this going. More luck, I think.
We talked too early.
Yep. Famous last words. All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight. The item before you for consideration is the Wilmer Police Department Body Camera Directive. As you know, the body cameras for the police department have been in the works for a number of years. We are at the point now where the directive was developed. We had two public meetings on the directive, the first one on January 23rd. That was a joint meeting with the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department. Our directives are virtually identical except for some basic wording in there regarding the departments. We had a second public meeting on February 22nd with just us as the police department, where we met with the public and other individuals about the policy for any questions. So with that, I'd like to go through the policy quickly. The state statute requires that the governing authority for the police department has to approve a body camera policy, so that's why we're here tonight to talk about it. So for the use of the body cameras here, the main purpose is to capture evidence, and we're going to talk about the policy. And the scope here, the policy governs the use of body worn cameras in the course of official duties. So BWC stands for body worn cameras. If you see any other acronyms tonight that seem out of place, just let me know, too. This applies only to body camera systems, so it does not apply to dash cams, does not apply to our interview room cameras and that type of thing at the law enforcement center. And this policy can be superseded for particular events or specialized details under some direction here, but that's going to be very rare events and needs to be documented why we would deviate from the policy. For this, officers may only use department-issued body worn cameras. Thank you, you were able to get us 24 body cameras here to get the project started. I was hoping that I would have one here to show you tonight, but the projected delivery date is April for those now. Body worn cameras have to be used consistent with the policy. They have to be worn on the body in the location prescribed in training, so they can't be under a jacket, they can't be facing backwards, some of the bizarre things like that that we don't think would happen anyway, but they have to be worn as specified. We have to document the use and non-use of body cameras. So there's some things that come into play... So there's some things that come into play with the body cameras that we have to report, how many body cameras the department has, how many we deploy on any given day if we're asked. We have to make our policy available. We have to let the public know how much body camera data that, and by data, I mean videos and audio, that we have at any given time. And we have to let the public know the records retention schedule. Anytime we use the camera, we need to document it. Anytime we don't use it and should have, we need to document it. But we want to give some officers some latitude on when they use it, too. Underneath this directive, your officers shall activate their body worn cameras when anticipating they'll be involved in, become involved, or witness other officers of the agency involved in some things. Where they must activate it would be pursuits, Terry stop of a motorist or pedestrian. And if you're not familiar with Terry stop, that's an investigative stop, and sometimes that'll even include a basic search for a weapon only. So that's a Terry stop. A search, seizure, arrest, use of force, or adversarial contact, activities likely to yield information having evidentiary value. So those are times where officers need to activate those cameras. Now with that comes some basics, too, that if all of a sudden an officer is attacked, we don't expect them to hit the button on their body camera to activate it before they take action, but as soon as they're able to, we want them to activate those cameras. In your general citizen contacts, officers have the discretion to whether to record or not. So if somebody has a window broken out on their car and they're making a report with us, or they're reporting their bike stolen or something like that, we don't have to activate the body cameras for that. We want the public to feel comfortable that every time they talk to us, they're not on camera, too. The officers don't have to inform the public that the camera is on or not. You'll see from the pictures that I have the camera, there is an indicator that shows that the camera is activated and recording. Once activated, the body worn camera needs to continue recording until the conclusion of the event, until the officers believe there's no other evidentiary value that'll be gained from that. If they're instructed to by a supervisor or somebody on the scene to discontinue recording for some reason. If they decide that they're going to discontinue recording, we want them to state why on the camera, if at all possible, but for sure, it has to go in their written report why they stopped their camera from recording. And officers need to reactivate the cameras under this policy to capture information if they've shut them off for some reason, too. Okay. Officers using their discretion should record any police citizen encounter with potential of information of evidentiary value unless they're prohibited for some reason. Statements with victims or witnesses to crimes or suspects of crimes, we want those recorded. Officers need not record persons receiving medical care unless the reason to believe they have evidentiary value. Sometimes during medical care, people may be in compromising positions, they, you know, may have their clothing removed for medical reasons. So we don't, we're not ordering officers to record during those times unless there would be some evidence that could be gained from that. And also, it's optional, too, when transporting people from one place of custody to another, such as hospital, detox, juvenile detention center. Officers are going to be responsible for when they finish their shift to download the data from their body worn cameras. We want to assure the proper transfer of data. Officers will be required to transfer from their own cameras, except in the case where there's, they're involved in an incident where law enforcement action has caused great bodily harm or death to someone, then that camera is turned over generally to a supervisor and the supervisor downloads it. We want to assure everybody, too, that the software that comes with these cameras, officers can't just go in and delete videos from them, they can't alter them, they can't get rid of the audio or anything like that. There's some very tight controls, but by having another officer transfer from the beginning is just another safety measure, the integrity of the evidence there. In a general incident where officers use body cameras, we are going to allow them to review it. So say there's a DUI arrest where they want to go back and review it and maybe count the number of steps that the person stepped off the line, or exact statements that were said, and put those in their report. We don't want any gotcha moments by our officers or in court, that type of thing. However, if those officers are involved in a critical incident where there's substantial bodily harm or death involved, or great bodily harm or death involved, we're going to hang onto that video and the officers are not going to review it until administration gives the okay. And that's based off of the best practices from the BCA. When they come in and do an investigation as an outside agency, they want to speak to that officer without them having reviewed any body cameras at that point. So. There's going to be some limits on...
Can I ask you a question for that?
Yes, please do.
Will you allow them to review the video prior to writing their written report? So after they talk to the BCA and any of your staff on an internal investigation, will they be able to review the audio before they write their written report?
Generally, what happens in a case like that, where it'd be a critical incident involving great bodily harm or death, where the BCA, the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension comes in, typically, they want that first report from the officer's memory. And then generally, what happens after that is they may allow, or there may be an opportunity for the officer to view that video and then do a supplemental report. But generally, in the case of our officers that were just involved in that incident last July, they had not, in fact, to this time, have not reviewed any of the squad car from that based on the recommendation from the BCA. The BCA wants the raw emotions, the raw information from the officer's memory on why they acted the way they did at the time. So generally, what's going to happen is that they would not view the video until everything is done, but there might be some opportunities for that. Any other questions? All right. For disclosing the data here, we're going to be downloading the data and then we have to flag that information if it contains any, anything in there where we'd have to be careful about releasing the data. So there you see the, that's the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, if you see that acronym come up again. So if it involves a victim of criminal sexual conduct, sex trafficking, victims of child abuse or neglect, vulnerable adults who are victims of maltreatment, undercover officers, informants, when the video is clearly offensive to common sensitivities and mandated reports, those really limit what, when those videos can go out there. So each one will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. There is some redaction software available with this, too, so we can blur faces, we can change the voices slightly if it's released to anyone but the court in certain cases. The people that have a little bit of control on the data here are the data subjects, and the data subject is the person that's being recorded. It's the officer who collected the data, whether they're seen or heard or not, and any other officer that's in the video, whether they're seen or heard or not. Those are called, are the data subjects. And this also includes if there's bystanders at an incident, as long as their voices or images are on the video, they're a data subject. Body worn camera data is considered presumptively private. Recordings are classified as private data. Again, the policy that we wanted to form here and the laws that the public is formed is if you, if there is a domestic, at a home in town, that the nosy neighbor down the street can't just come in and get the body worn camera video, there has to be some reason for it and the right person involved in the video to get it. Body worn camera data pertaining to people is private, as is data pertaining to businesses or other entities. Some data is classified as confidential and some is public. We'll talk a little bit about that. For confidential data, to really put it in a nutshell, that's if something is under investigation, that information is confidential and won't be released until that incident is done. Public data, things that can be released to the public here as long as they're not under active investigation, is data documenting the discharge of a firearm by a peace officer in the course of duty. The exceptions to that are in training and destroying a diseased or injured animal, but any other discharge of a firearm, that is public data. Data that documents use of force by a peace officer that results in substantial bodily harm or greater. And substantially, substantial bodily harm could be stitches or a broken bone is generally what that is, the factor there. Data that data subject requests to be made accessible to the public, subject to redaction. So if someone is recorded, that person that's been recorded could come in and say, hey, I want a copy of that, and they can release it to the media or whatever the case might be, as long as it's, they wouldn't have access to it if it was still an active investigation, but they can release that information. However, if the other data subjects, the other people in the video don't want their faces on there, we can redact that. Data that documents the final disposition of a disciplinary action against a public employee, that is public data also. Access by non-employees, okay, unless the data is part of an active investigation, an individual data subject shall be provided with a copy of the recording upon request, but subject to the following guidelines of redaction. The data on other individuals who do not consent to the release must be redacted. So again, if you're videoing a group of people and a bunch of people say, no, I don't want it released, you've got to blur them out. Data that would identify undercover officers must be redacted. Data on other officers who are not undercover and who are on duty and engaged in the performance of their official duties may not be redacted. So by being a police officer, you don't have the, you're on duty and you're not undercover, you don't have the ability to have your face blurred or your voice changed. That's part of being a public official.
Question.
Yes.
So when you have a large group, let's say, like the fight on the basketball court that just happened at the state basketball tournaments, how are you, how are those people supposed to know that something's going to get released in a large group like that when you've got maybe 100 people? How would they know to request to have their faces redacted?
That's a, that's a great question.
Okay.
That's one of those things here that what we would probably look at from our end is the ability to potentially identify the other people in the video. You know, if it's a figure from a distance and you're not likely to make out who they are, that could come into play. It may even become something where we just go ahead and blur those other people if they're not part of the investigation itself or part of the action. So there's a lot of individual case-by-case things that are going to be a work in progress, and we've got Mr. Scott on speed dial for some of those questions that'll be coming up, too. Good question. We have to advise you of how we're going to safeguard the data. Whoops. The security at the office with these videos, it's password protected, it's in a server, an independent server at the law enforcement center, which is a secure building. We don't allow personally owned devices, they're not to be programmed or used. Officers shall not edit, alter, or erase recording unless authorized, and they would not have the authority to. There's only going to be about three people that have the ability to erase the recordings there. So once it's on the device itself, it's in the system. And a question I've had from officers on that, and one thing we did to put this policy into place is we got a volunteer committee of officers to put it together. We had seven officers that volunteered to be on this committee. They took the League of Minnesota Cities model policy, the Minnesota Chiefs policy, the Minnesota Sheriff's policy, and put that together and came up with this. One question that came up from them is, you know what's going to happen? What happens if we accidentally wear the body camera into the bathroom, into the locker room, something like that? We're going to flag it, that that's, you know, a recording that might have sensitive information on it, you could say. And we are going to retain all the recordings for 90 days, but again, we're going to make it so that only a supervisor would have access to that. So we're going to really tighten up the controls on things like that. Yes.
Okay. So if you do erase or alter a recording, is it a double signature?
Yes, with that, it would need administration approval, and then our IT people would be doing the erasing, so.
Okay.
And the last thing on there is, we do have to have a biannual audit on our body camera data. And right now, the legislature is working through that. What's likely going to happen is that the Sheriff's Department will audit ours, will audit theirs, or have a neighboring agency, maybe, you know, Stearns County would come in and audit ours, that type of thing, just to show that we're retaining things as long as we're supposed to, getting rid of things when we should, and handling the video right. Pre-agency use of the data. Supervisors will randomly review body worn camera usage by each officer. Again, we're not going to be following up on them a lot, but we want to make sure that they're using the technology properly and also serving the needs of the city in the best way possible. Going to review body worn camera data for specific incidents that give rise to a complaint or concern about officer misconduct or performance. There's nothing that limits us from using this if there would be a complaint on an officer or some misconduct. And yeah, there's nothing that limits that. Officers are also aware that they should contact their supervisors if anything that is recorded that might be a training value. Yes.
Well, I'm just curious on that last one. Is that too restrictive? I mean, if you have an active investigation that's over, if a supervisor thinks it would be something that could be useful, why wouldn't you just allow them to put that out for educational purposes? It seems like a unique opportunity. I'm just curious why it's on the officer and not just, if anybody finds a value and investigation's over, that you couldn't use that for training?
Sure. No, that's a, that's a good point. And that's probably worded a little bit wrong here, that any officer that encounters video, you know, whether it be from themselves or otherwise, that we can potentially use that for training, so. Data retention, all body worn camera data will be held for at least 90 days. The discharge of a firearm by a police officer in the course of their duty, that data has to be held on to for at least one year. If it's use of force by an officer that causes substantial bodily injury or give rise to a formal complaint against an officer, we have to hold on to that data for six years. Footage classified as not evidentiary and not maintained for training shall be destroyed after 90 days. So 90 days is kind of our norm. Now with that, if anyone, any data subject comes in and wants their video held on longer than 90 days, they can apply for 100, they will get 180-day extension if they ask for it. At the end of that 180 days, if they want another 180-day extension, they'll get that as long as they keep reapplying. So if they feel that their video is important for some reason and we're retaining it and they want us to hold on to it, it'll be for 180 days at a time. Supervisors have to monitor that officers comply with the policy. And one question that came up at one of our meetings is what happens if officers don't comply with it? And it can be everything from a supervisor talking to them, to note in their file, disciplinary action, termination, and even criminal prosecution, depending on what the violation might be, so. With that, I'll stand for any questions. Just quickly, those pictures that you see there, that's the actual camera system that we will be getting. It looks like a pager-type unit that'll be on the belt, and there's a wire that runs up to a camera that's one-inch square that officers will generally wear in the center of their chest, or they have the option of a second, of a camera that can mount to a pair of glasses, too. I personally have watched video from both. The ones in the glasses have a great view, but when an officer is looking around, you need some Dramamine to watch that video for any length of time, so.
Okay. Councilman Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
I'm sorry, hold on a minute. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue before we bring it to the council table? Seeing and hearing done, we'll close the public input period and bring it to the council table. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I jumped again on that one. Thank you, Chief. Very informative. Done a lot of research on this, checking all across the country and with the different Supreme Courts and whatnot, there's a lot of these issues and stuff coming up, and laws are changing quickly. But based on the research that I've done in various universities and state studies and whatnot, it kind of shows that this is next-level checks and balances for anybody and everybody, including law enforcement and the public. It seems like a really redundant system with a lot of great safeguards. That's going to both benefit the, benefit the public and benefit officers when it comes to situations that, you know, could compromise the city in some way, and this is just an excellent way, I think, to maintain detail and accuracy, higher conviction rates when necessary, and higher accountability rates. And so I appreciate the city being willing to look at this and accept this into their policy, because I think it's a, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce that?
I would make that motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve the... Motion made and seconded to approve the body camera use policy. Councilmember Meskey.
Just a question on that last slide about compliance. I know it's mostly about the BWC data, but you had earlier in the presentation those general guidelines of when it should be turned on. If you've, if an officer fails to comply there, I would assume it still falls under the compliance piece, or is that the officer's purview on those ones where it says you really should turn it on?
No, correct. You know, there, if an officer does not turn it on in those specified cases, they will need to justify why that, that didn't happen.
Councilmember Christiansen followed by Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. It seems to be one more item that you're going to have to wear, or the officers are one more thing to be responsible for. I wonder how much time it's going to take away from their other duties. Just a comment. I, I also ask, is it, this will be used in court cases, I'm assuming?
Correct.
To be available, even to the, the general public if they know that they were videoed somewhere, they can request it and bring it to a court case?
Yes.
Okay. The media is going to be interested in this. And I, I noticed where you can and can't give out the information, but will they be able to hold, get ahold of the audio like KWL M in instances where it's news, basically, but it won't, I mean, we saw where you can and can't do it, but they'll be able to get the audio from those?
That's something they could certainly request if it's an active investigation. Even the audio would be limited where they wouldn't be able to get that, but once an investigation is concluded, they could certainly put in a request for it and it could be granted, some of that information.
And then you said 90 days is typically how long you're going to keep it? Unless it is...
Correct. There's some of those cases that we outlined, if it's the use of a firearm, discharge of a firearm, that we hold on to it for a year. If there's substantial bodily injury or an officer complaint involved, then it's six years that it's held on to, so. Yep, 90 days. We, we figure that most times if there's a court action that comes up or a need for some evidence out of it, or a complaint against an officer, usually within 90 days, those type of things will have occurred. And after 90 days, we'll need to, to clear up the server space.
How about, how about a car accident where there's fatalities or something? Will they be subject to, up to the police officer to use that? I mean, that could be evidentiary, too.
Sure. You know, that's, that's a great question. Maybe something that I should specify, if there's specific evidence in those, those will likely be burned onto a disk and kept kind of forever. But this would be dealing with just on the server itself to make sure that, that we retained it for that amount of time. But yes, if it would be a severe accident or something like that, that could hold evidentiary value way beyond those 90 days.
The information you gave us is awesome. I, I think that this part of the program probably should be on rack age several times. I think the public would be, not just on the council meeting itself, but I think this portion of it is, I think the public is real interested in that, and they'll maybe learn what they can and can't do, or what can be used. Thank you for the information. It was really detailed and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And I'd like to note, too, that our officers are very much in support of wearing the body cameras. You know, getting seven officers to volunteer their time to work on a policy committee, that's a feat in itself when it comes to policy, but they're anxious to, to use this type of technology. And we think it's a great opportunity to show the good work that, that Walmer PD does, and not just evidence, but to show how we interact with the community and, and use it in that way, too.
Councilmember Fagerly followed by Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this records in color now, right?
Correct.
It's not like the old black and white?
Right. And, and high definition, too, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Osmus.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Damage to the cameras. I, I, I would imagine police officers might get in a scuffle. Is the, the thought that the person that they're fighting with is then going to get charged with criminal damage to property for the equipment and be responsible for repayment of it? And what's the turnover of how fast you can replace the, the damaged equipment?
Sure. That's a great question. With that, we would go for restitution on any type of incident like that if, if it's appropriate. If the, the person grabs a camera and, and breaks it, you know, we'd certainly go after criminal damage to property charges for that type of a case. The, the company here, I think they have a, like a 14-day turnaround on a camera where we send it in, and hopefully things happen under warranty if, if they do. But that's something that, yeah, that's bound to happen. So we want to plan ahead for that, too.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I was just going to wonder, like, did I understand that there's a committee of, what, two or three that can clear off a tape or clear off a video, or am I misunderstanding that?
It would not, everything will stay on for at least 90 days.
Okay.
To do anything different would, well, there, that, that's our minimum there. So even those incidents where an officer might leave it on in the restroom or leave it on, on the shelf at the office and records for 14 hours, it's going to be 14 hours of a, of the wall, you know, on the server for 90 days. So that's, that's happened already with our squad car cameras, so. You know, so that, getting rid of it before that 90 days, I don't see where that would, would happen for any other, just removing it after the 90 days, then it does require the, the administrator and the IT person to coordinate on the removal there.
Okay.
If that makes, if that's a question.
Yeah. Now, would that be like you or your second-in-command or?
Correct. Yep, it would be Captain Anderson or myself.
Okay. Okay. Now, if, okay, let's say, I don't know all the jobs in the police department. Is there like a booking officer, or is it just the officers in the field that wear these? Or how does that work? Will each officer have one no matter what their role is in the, in the process?
Right. Right now, the police department has ordered 24 cameras, so that is going to outfit our, all of our patrol staff, uniform patrol staff, and our gang enforcement officers. And I'll give a spoiler alert that you may be getting another request somewhere down the line for a few more cameras. We even have our community service officers wearing them because they end up in adversarial conversations with people about animals and parking tickets and, and, you know, have maybe one available for our detectives to wear when they go out to interview someone, that type of thing. But this will cover all of our, kind of our more line, or direct line staff with the cameras that we're getting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. Your presentations are always very informative and very thorough. You do a nice job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. The only thing that I would ask is that if we can get that, if, if there's a change in that policy to where the officers on a shooting are able to review that before they can write their report, I certainly think that'd be advantageous. We want things to be in the favor of our officers as much as possible, not to change the raw emotion as you stated it. But I think there are departments out there that are allowing the officers to review that video, and I think that's advantageous to our officers. So something to consider, and I understand that you're using a best practice, so I do understand that. So with that, we have a motion to approve the body cam policy. That's been made and seconded. There's been discussion. All those in favor, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Chuantas.
Aye.
Edi, Zoneye.
That resolution does pass.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could ask one other question.
Chief?
Is this an SD card that's in these cameras? Or is it direct digital to them?
It is, is a digital video recorder in each. It looks like a fire department pager that they're wearing the belt. That's actually the, the DVR is in that. And then when they get back to the office, they'll put it in a docking station and it'll download everything.
So there's no disk or card in, that could be taken out?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Yep, each, each camera has the ability to record for 12 straight hours before it's filled up. And in a 12-hour shift, likely, most departments say you probably have about two to three hours of video on an app, on your typical 12-hour shift.
And the only place it could be recorded is on that docking station?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next is a consideration of an ordinance, of an introduction of 2018 bond financing ordinances and setting public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, last week, representatives from Springstead Incorporated were before you at your work session and presented some preliminary schedules to finance the capital improvement projects, the major capital improvement projects that we're looking at doing this year. There were five projects that were presented, the City Hall Community Center, the Curling Club, the PFA or three lift stations for the waste treatment plant, the Civic Center R22 financing, and the 2018 street and storm sewer improvements. Now, before you tonight, we have four resolutions that help move those schedules forward for three of the five projects. Two of the resolutions before you tonight are both pertaining to the Civic Center R22 and the small amount that would be attributable to the room that would be contributing to the Zamboni, because that's not equipment. That has to be financed through a different statute. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want me to present those individually, we have four resolutions. Three of those resolutions will introduce an ordinance and set a public hearing. The fourth resolution will set a public hearing for the tax abatement for that small amount of the, a room for the Civic Center. So the first, first resolution before you tonight, Mr. Mayor, I believe in your pack is on page 55, the electronic version. It is dealing with the waste treatment lift stations for Gordon Avenue Armory and the fairgrounds. The resolution, again, as I mentioned, would introduce the ordinance and set a public hearing for April 16th. The amount of the principal amount of this bond is $1,620,000. And this, again, would be financed, even though it is listed as a general obligation wa, water revenue note, would be financed through the PFA, which is a public facilities authority through the state of Minnesota.
I'll move that resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce a resolution calling for a public hearing on an ordinance authorizing issuance of Geo Water Revenue Note and levying taxes for the payment thereof. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Chuantas.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Edi, Zoneye.
And that amount was for $1,620,000.
Mr. Mayor, the second resolution before you tonight is on page 60 of your electronic version. It is dealing with the Civic Center R22 replacement, which we have been dealing with. This is an equipment note. It is special legislation that passed in the, in the 2017 legislative session, allowing for this equipment note. It is, covers the total cost of the equipment and the room. The fourth resolution I'll have for you tonight deals with the tax abatement portion, but this dollar amount includes the total amount that will be issued. Again, it's a resolution introducing the ordinance and setting a public hearing for April 16th for the general obligation bonds series 2018A in the amount of $2,780,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a resolution calling for a public hearing on the ordinance authorizing, authorizing the issuance of $2.78 million Geo Bond and levying taxes and the payment thereof. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Chuantas.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Edi, Zoneye.
The resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, the third resolution before you tonight is on page 65 of your electronic version. It is a resolution introducing the ordinance and setting a public hearing for April 16th for the general obligation improvement series, bond series 2018B in the amount of $2,975,000. Of this amount, $1,470,000 is contributable to the 2018 street improvement program. $1,505,000 is for the western storm sewer. The total amount of the projects combined is $4,620,000. We are combining them to save on costs. They will be segregated and accounted for separately because of the assessments that are dealing with the 429 improvements for the street improvement program. But we are proposing to have the resolution introducing the ordinance and setting the public hearing for them both combined. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the resolution calling for a public hearing on an ordinance authorizing the issuance, and my dollar amount's right here, 2.975?
That's correct.
For general obligation improvement bonds series 2018B and levying the taxes and payment thereof. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Chuantas.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Edi, Zoneye.
The resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, the fourth resolution before you tonight is a resolution calling, calling for a public hearing on a proposed property tax abatement for the building portion of the Civic Center. That amount, preliminary costs are at $125,000. This is a different statute. This amount and financing was included in your second resolution dealing with the R22 improvement. It does not increase that amount at all, is only because of a different statute, funding, authority, that we are required by statute to do a, a special hearing for the tax abatement portion. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the resolution calling for a public hearing on proposed property tax abatements for the purpose of issuing tax abatement bonds to finance certain public improvements at the Civic Center. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Chuantas.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Edi, Zoneye.
That resolution passes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one final comment, that we have been in conversations with the local lending institutions as we have done the last two years, and so we are exploring both a public sale and a private placement, especially for the street improvement program. The other two financings will be coming at a later date, as the schedules you looked at last week.
Thank you. Next is a consideration of placement of the playground equipment.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, a week ago at the work session, we discussed playground equipment that was purchased last fall. Majority of the equa, the equipment will be placed at Miller Park. We had one remaining unit that the council discussed where to place that equipment at. I do believe the consensus of staff was to place that equipment at Sunrise Park, and that's the proposal that's before you this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to place the, the third piece of playground equipment at Sunrise Park. Discussion. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign. That motion does carry. Next, a consideration of a draft remote meeting attendance policy. Robert Scott, our city attorney. I'm sorry, that motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you is a draft policy for the remote meeting attendance, which would be attending by interactive television or Skype, and you'll notice there's a markup as well as a clean copy. The markup reflects changes requested by the council at the last meeting, which came before you for approval. The gist of the changes is to soften the requirement for notice to the council and staff before a council member wishes to attend a meeting remotely. Previously, the draft called for notice to staff at least one regular meeting in advance, and as soon as possible in the case of a special meeting. That language is still in the policy now, but it's aspirational, and the absolute bare minimum notice required is simply the notice required to comply with the statute, typically three days before the meeting. With that, I think the recommendation is that the council approve this policy.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve the draft remote meeting attendance policy. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Mr. Administrator, if you wish to make a comment?
Just one request. Would the council members please stop by and see the city clerk before departing tonight? We do need a signature on a document. Under the consent agenda, we approved the tax forfeited document on that piece of property, so we need each council member to stop by and sign that document. That's all I have, Mayor.
The only thing I have under mayor's announcements is congratulations to the Wilmer basketball teams. They did well. Girls placed fourth at State, and boys played hard on Thursday night, but up against a very difficult Delano team, so. A lot of great things happening within our community this week, and so, attend the events as you can.